All right, good evening everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order please with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Telkon. Drop your mic. Switch your mic to the other one.
Thank you everyone and welcome this evening. Roll call, Mr. Lombard.
Call him.
Yes.
Odie.
Yes.
Clumper.
Yes.
Saxor.
Yes.
Telkon.
Yes.
All right, if there are no questions on the agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve that as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's a first and a second. Roll call vote, Mr. Lombard.
Telkon.
Yes.
Odie.
Yes.
Clumper.
Yes.
Saxor.
Yes.
Call him.
Yes. No conflict of interest disclosure or waiver requests tonight. That takes us to community input and I don't believe we have any of that tonight. So that takes us to our first item under General Business. We have an oral report, a good news report from the Brandon Valley Middle School regarding project-based learning.
Good evening, my name is Amanda Nelson. I'm the Assistant Principal up at the middle school. This month's good news report will be brought to you by Mrs. Mallory Hoosier. She's a math teacher at the middle school. Over the course of this year, as I've gotten to know her, she's really pushed herself professionally and expanded some of the ideas that she brings into the classroom. So she's going to present on one of her units that was project-based learning. All right, good evening. I am here to talk about a unit that I did a few months ago, all revolving around percentages, and it was a project-based learning unit. Next slide. Next slide.
Yep, bear with me.
Okay. To start, project-based learning is really all about how you're presenting your information to your students and letting them collaborate together to design solution. These are problems and questions that they'll probably see in the real world and these are really authentic and meaningful questions that they might see. Specifically relating to math, the benefits of this are that PBL is really collaborative, interactive, and definitely makes them critical think, which is really awesome. It also help increases their deeper understanding, helps them retain the knowledge longer, and also helps them figure out when they can apply this information in real-life situations as well. Advocates for PBL say that kids are more motivated to do these types of lessons, probably because they are, you know, so hands-on and interactive. Excellent. Okay. So I definitely did go out of my comfort zone for this project. In the past few years, I've taught this as a traditional chapter, which I displayed on the left there, but I also wanted to show how I did it this chapter, or this time around on the right. Really, my overall objectives were still the same, that didn't change. It was how I went about everything. I totally kind of blew up the chapter and reworked it. The biggest change that I made on this was that instead of students taking a chapter test at the very end, they actually did a portfolio. So they worked on this portfolio throughout the entire chapter and then when we were all done, we put it all together and that's what they presented instead of a test. It really showed their overall learning and really how to apply what they were learning into future situations. So that was really quite fun to look at. So on the next slide, I just wanted to show you what some of these assignments looked like. I could probably talk about this all day, but I just wanted to give you a few brief bits of information. So one homework assignment, the very first one that they did was they got to create a budget for themselves that maybe they would use in their future. We talked about percentages that you would budget for your housing, for your income, insurance, food, utilities. So we had a lot of conversations about that and then they created a budget. We also talked a lot about tax, tip, and markup. And so students for that homework assignment got to do five different restaurant reviews. They had to pick a menu, appetizer, main course dessert, show how they'd find the total menu. And I also wanted to have a little bit of writing, so then they actually wrote a restaurant review, which was really fun for them to be creative a little bit. And the last one there to display discount, they got to design, color, create their own shopping ad, which showed their original prices, the discount, and then the new price. So those are really fun to see as well. On the next slide, to kind of wrap all this together, my overall goal in doing this is how can I really make this more real for them? That was always my objective. And so I really wanted members from our community to come in and work with our kids revolving around these concepts. Not only how kids will see those in their future lives, but also maybe even their jobs would involve a lot of these concepts as well. So the last two days of our chapter, students got, excuse me, a random career with an income amount and years of study. And they got to go to different stations and it was their choice on these. They got to complete them of what they best thought fit and go from there. The first day that we did was what I consider that was our fun day. They got to go shopping. So one station was a restaurant. They got to go pick whatever meal they wanted to. The next station was shopping. They could buy whatever they wanted to and then grocery shopping. And at the end, they calculated their tax, tip, total purchases for the day. That was a fun day. And then the second day was kind of the more intricate decisions. Okay, now you have to buy a car. What are you going to choose based off of your income? Is it going to be new or used? What do you think is your best decision? Buying a house, do you think it's better to rent or have a mortgage? Sue a loans, what does that look like for your career and your income amount? And last but not least, credit cards. Are you going to pay your credit card statement in full or are you going to pay in payments and then also have interest, which was a concept we talked about a lot? On the next slide, we've got pictures here from our event. This is where I tied in our members of the community. I was lucky enough to have six people who were willing to come in and work with our kids and have discussions about how they use it in their job and kind of help them think about decisions they may make. The first day I had a worker from Boutique come in for the shopping day, which was awesome. And then second day, I had five people, two from First National Bank here in town, Great Western Bank, Hag Realty Group, and Mr. Lombard also came in to help us. So that was really, that was really fun. My kids asked if they could all come back next week for the full week. It was not an option, but... So on the next slide is the rest of our volunteers. So it was a lot of fun. On the next slide, what I have for us is our final feelings. I actually had them take this survey a few weeks ago and they had just finished up a traditional unit. So I asked them five questions. Which did you feel which chapter, the project-based or the traditional, was easier for you to learn? Which did you feel most confident in learning? Which have you retained the most information? Which helped you prepare for your future and which did you enjoy more? The project-based was the red-ish-orange and then the traditional chapter responses were the blue. The first three questions were not quite 50/50, but pretty even here and there. And then it was pretty dramatic once you got to the last questions, which were which did you feel helped you prepare for your future and which did you enjoy more? They overwhelmingly felt that the project-based chapter really helped them with their future and they enjoyed it more. A lot of kids said that was because of the hands-on content. You know, overall this chapter really did challenge me. It took me outside my comfort zone, which was good for me. And I think the icing on the cake was that this chapter really aligned well with our Brandon Valley belief statements. So to end here, I'm going to compare each of our statements to how it tied in with our chapter. The first one here talking about that cooperative piece of our students and community and parents and everyone involved, really that team effort, that's what this project was all about. That's how it started in the first place, was to have our community involved. How can I get people in to work with our kids? So that was a really huge piece of this. The next one, creating a safe and nurturing stimulating environment. Throughout this project, as the project went on, my kids grew more and more that stimulating conversation and they felt safe enough to have these discussions about what happens in my future if I choose this or what happens in this scenario. So it really created quite a good culture in my classroom, which was awesome to see progress. On the next slide, the acceptance and respect of our different needs of our kids. Throughout this project, another goal is to differentiate my instruction. How can I meet my different needs of all my different learners? Trying to get kind of that artistic piece, some of the technology piece, you know, trying to give my kids options to really help them best. On the next one. I love this one because I really felt like our life skills were a big part of this chapter. My kids even did things like balancing a checkbook. That was one of the things we talked about. They got a payday every two weeks and then they balance their checkbook and make purchases and we discussed how that works and how you keep track of your finances, along with filling out receipts for tax and tip and budgeting and different concepts like that were all To help our kids compete globally, I think a lot of our discussions that we had in my classroom not only helped them think what they would do in a real-world choice, but also this is going to help them compete and be more successful in the long run, which was good to get their minds thinking about that. The technology piece, we use our one-to-one tablets every day. I mean, we use so much with those. We did a little bit of research. We use Google Classroom a lot, a lot of discussions and different posts like that. So we use a lot of that technology element. And for our last one, preparing that foundation for kids to achieve their full potential, I think throughout this project, I think my kids grew a lot in their confidence. And I think not only could I see that, but they could see their confidence growing, what their potential is, not only in math, but also in the future decisions they're going to make as they get older. So overall, it was a great project. Any questions?
I have two unless somebody wants to go first. Go ahead.
I have a couple of questions I'm curious to hear you answer. My first question is, is this something you think you'll continue the project-based approach as you go into the school year further?
Yes, I think so. I don't think that I will be able to deal with every chapter. That would be awesome, but definitely looking forward. There was a lot of good elements in this. There's obviously a lot of things that I learned from and want to tweak going forward, but I definitely would like to continue thinking of ways outside the box to continue this.
So like as you reflected on it, is there something that you would change next time?
I think because I had to change so much of my daily routine to make it project-based, I think I would continue to kind of tweak my daily activities just a little bit more to make them flow together a little bit better. That was probably a big thing.
How often did you pay them?
Every two weeks.
And how many paydays total was it?
We only did this chapter for, it was a little bit over a month, so they only got two paydays. And let me tell you, that was a big, that was a big adjustment for some of them. That very first payday, I had a kid come back, he's like, "I spent all my money." And I'm like, "Oh my goodness." You know, like, so then, but that led to really good conversations about this is real world, what would you do? Good conversation.
Did you issue speeding tickets if they're goofing off?
Well, what actually was nice about that is they did everything on Google Classroom. So they had an Excel sheet or the Google Sheets. So actually I could check up on their checkbook to make sure they were doing what they were supposed to be doing. So that was good to kind of have those conversations.
Thanks.
So I have a question. So I have a question, the Alex piece, that gives you some of the kind of the traditional assessment piece. I mean, it's online, but it gives you kind of that traditional piece.
Right.
Two as a way to check. And so they're taking quizzes throughout the course of the four weeks plus and then so the portfolio is not the only assessment. There are all those little pieces along the way, right?
Exactly. They did an Alex assignment every day, which actually I did that on the first day, which was nice because it gave them immediate feedback and they liked that immediate feedback and I do too. And then they also took a quiz, so I had quite a few ways to check there.
Was that Alex piece, was it tied into like if they did certain, certain point they got extra money?
No. No.
Okay.
Maybe somebody considered. No, not this time.
Performance pay. Can you speak a little bit to the increase in student engagement that you saw because of the level of differentiation that you had to do with project-based learning? And that's differentiated instruction, you know, critically important, as we know all of our students have different learning styles. In math, that is sometimes challenging. Can you speak to, I guess, how you saw engagement increase and some of the things that you did to differentiate instruction?
Yeah, definitely. I think a lot of the ways I saw the increased motivation was honestly through a lot of conversations with my students. They were asking a lot of really good in-depth questions, so I could tell that they were very intrigued by that. To differentiate, I gave them a lot of choices in their assignments. One of my units was on, it's percent change. And so we did a research where they would research the history of prices and however year they chose, 20 years ago, whatever it was, and we researched the prices now. So I kind of gave them a little option of, you know, you get the choice, what do you, what year do you want to choose? What options do you want to choose? What items do you want to choose? I tried to also differentiate towards the ending in the writing piece. I know a lot of kids like to do the writing and then the artistic as well. So I think it's always still a learning process, still figuring out how I could do that a little bit more, but that's what I did for this first go-around.
And then just a comment. Thank you for the great work specifically on tying it to real life. Anytime you hear seventh grade math and someone speak to how much your kids set it connected to real life with a household budget, balancing a checkbook, et cetera, hats off to you on making math real world for them. Very well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Administration Report, Superintendent Report, Superintendent Larson.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few items to update you on here. This evening Legislative Session continues. Would note, attended the Legislative Coffee, Bethany Meadows received an update from our local legislators. Our priority as the large school group, which we are members of, in addition to Associated School Boards and also School Administrators South Dakota, remains state aid, increase that 2% target, which is inflation, and then also some additional tweaks to capital outlay. Good luck to member Saxor, who's with us on the phone. She did declare candidacy for the Associated School Board's Executive Board position, so best of luck to her. An update on where we're at with our elementary school construction timeline. We opened our competitive bids, our sealed bids, February 20th. The apparent low bidder was Pesca Construction, $14,675,000. That number is slightly over our architect's estimated number of $14.2 million. So we're currently reviewing that bid, evaluating that bid, and we'll take a look at potentially some value engineering items. It's important to note that the integrity of the structure and the high-quality building will not be sacrificed, but we are going to take a look at that bid and see if there's any value engineering that can be done to bring that number more towards our architect's estimate of $14.2 million. I would imagine that you will see approval of that apparent low bid from Pesca at our March 9th meeting and included in that very likely may be some value engineering to bring that number down. Construction will begin this spring as weather allows. We will have an elementary boundary line to discuss the tweaks that will be necessary for elementary boundary lines with the bringing on of a new building. And then we will open in the fall of 2021. Kindergarten screening, registration is open. If you know someone with a child who happens to look like they're about kindergarten age eligible, make sure you encourage them to call one of our schools to get registered for kindergarten screening so we can make certain and have the most accurate number possible for next year's kindergarten class. So continue to spread the word. On a not-so-positive item, want to make the board aware of our Title I budget issue for next school year. Received notification from South Dakota Department of Education, Office of Grants Management on February 18th. We will be seeing a major reduction in Title I. Our poverty rate in accordance to the U.S. Census data has decreased substantially from 5.2 to 3.89. And while that percentage doesn't seem substantial, the 5% threshold is a major marker for our eligibility for certain title funds. So what we're looking at is we're looking at a reduction of over $180,000, which is almost a 58% decrease in Title I funds for next year. Our estimated allocation is $133,000 and change. It's important to note that that allocation will support two Title I tutors. So Title I tutor staff reduction is going to be necessary. We do have a retirement included in the Title I staff right now. And then in addition to that retirement, three current Title I staff will need to be reduced. I would note that Director Bab, whom directly supervises the Title I staff, met with them prior to this meeting so that they could hear it from Administration. In addition to that, late this afternoon or today, I met with the BVA to inform them of the situation. As outlined in the negotiated agreement, the BVA will receive our written communication outlining the necessity to reduce staff tomorrow. They have 10 days approximately to respond with alternative suggestions that receive, that get the same thing done. So they will receive that communication. I would anticipate that in the coming month of March, we will bring forward to you the recommendation for staff in which will be reduced. Few other brief items. Negotiations and wage recommendation. We have a pre-negotiations meeting set between, with myself and Mr. Lombard and the BVA. Would note that the Personnel Welfare Committee meets prior to our Board of Education meeting. We sit down internally in executive session, preparing for negotiations. And our date for teacher negotiations has been established for Wednesday, March 25th. There are two other dates set if necessary. Look to ratify the master contract at our April 14th Board of Education meeting and at that time we will have other wage and salary recommendations, et cetera. Budget process is currently ongoing. Important to note that in the month of, in the month of March, the preliminary capital outlay budget will be presented and approved. Again, that's necessary for the major items that we do that have to be big, gives us enough time to complete those in an appropriate manner. You'll receive the preliminary budget presentation in May and the public budget hearing and potential action on the budget will occur in July. The intermediate school will be sharing some good news with us at our second meeting in March and our elementary buildings will be sharing some good news at our second meeting in April. Quick update on the Brandon Valley Booster Club video board. The Brandon Valley Booster Club has been working to secure sponsorship funds, et cetera, for the construction of a video board at our outdoor athletic complex. I would tell you that that process is ongoing and that planning continues. Two items that I really want you to be aware of is the Brandon Valley School District will purchase the board and receive an immediate reimbursement from the Booster Club. Basically, that's for the tax advantage. When the school district buys it, we don't pay sales tax, whereas if they did, they would have to. I liken it to this, the 20-some thousand dollars they save, go back to our kids and scholarships and whatnot. I would also tell you that it's a common practice for us to conduct business in that way when we make a purchase and are reimbursed by the Booster Club. But it is a Booster Club video board purchased, the funds are acquired by them through sponsorship. One item to note on that sponsorship of the video board with the Booster Club, Coke has been presented as a potential sponsor for the video board. I met with Mr. Marso. In addition to meeting with Mr. Marso, I met with the concessions manager. And in addition to that, met with the Coke representative. We have a strong relationship with Coke currently. They provide us some benefits for high school events, et cetera. Ultimately, what it is, it's a contract with Coke for exclusive rights to have Coke at our concession stand. So that is an item that we will be bringing forward here in the near future. Academic calendar item, parent-teacher conferences, March 16th and 17th. Thursday, school will be in session. That's our snow/flood day. Friday, there is no school for a comp day and then we break into spring break there in April with an early dismissal on the 9th, no school on Friday, the 10th, or Monday, the 13th. With that, I would certainly entertain any questions that you have.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Larson. Next, no board policy and that takes us to General Business, item number one, presentation of the Brandon Valley School District Five-Year Plan for 2020 to 2025.
Good, Madam Chair, as you are well aware, the Brandon Valley School District Five-Year Plan is absolutely a critical component of what we do for short-range planning as well as intermittent planning or intermediate planning, maybe I should say. It's an extensive document with tons of information. Mr. Lombard and his staff do a phenomenal job of putting it all together. We greatly appreciate our principals' timely completion of their respective building plans to bring it all together. With that, I would turn it over to Business Manager Lombard.
As Jared said, it's a very important document and like I always tell the board that it's even more important than the annual budget in the fact that this looks out every decision for the next five years. A budget is rather easy. It's just the decisions for one year and one year only. This document looks out how those decisions affect you in the five years, hence after you make that, those decisions. What I'm going to review is the summary information. It's basically divided into four different projections. Capillale projection, general fund projection, special education, and enrollment are the four topics in the summary section that I'm going to review with you tonight. The first one, excuse me, is the Capillale. The Capillale is the Major Equipment and Building Needs Fund. That's where we purchase the big equipment and our building items. There's a number of items that are, what I say have-to-do items, and they're listed in red on that document up there, that we just, they're just, we have to do five buses, pay our debt service, that type of stuff. There's about eight or 10 of those items that we, technology that we have every year and they're listed in red right there. The first column is 1920 and the second column is next year, 2021. But those items in red are that kind of have-to-do items. Transfer of money to the general fund, copier leases, bus purchases, equipment purchases, technology, library books, and textbook adoptions, and then our debt service. So those are the main, the 10, eight or 10 things that we have to do. In this fund over the five years, a big component of that is we really have minimized the amount of debt that we've issued in this fund. We have just a small amount of debt that we have with the intermediate school, that $555,000. You'll see on the first line there, the debt service every year. So we have very little debt in the, over the five-year period, but we've accomplished a lot of projects over, in the past years and we're going to continue to do that in the future years. The biggest one being an addition to the high school that we have scheduled in 2022. You can see that is $7.5 million for an addition on the high school. And then another, I have another million, the second year of that, probably for parking concerns and parking needs is kind of where I'm at with that. So a total of $8 million for an addition onto the high school. And it's our projection to pay for that entire addition with the utilization of cash. No debt issued or no bonds issued for that thing. That is one thing that I'm extremely proud of, that we can do that and not pay, not do it until we're able to pay for it with utilization of cash. And how that's accomplished is through the fund balances. We, over the next five years or three years actually, will be building up those fund balances, which are in the bottom there. And that buildup is seen in the last line there, $2 million next year, $2 million the following year. The third year is when we'll spend it and then we start rebuilding after that again. That's reflected in the, in the fund balance amounts. The other thing that I had in the Capillale Fund, the revenue is 100% from property tax. There's no state aid involved in the Capillale Fund whatsoever. It's 100% from property tax. So I think that's critical for you to remember as a board member. Any questions on the Capillale Fund?
I have a quick question. I'm just wondering, for the middle school one-to-one initiative, there's only an extra amount of money in one of the years? And then for the high school one-to-one, there's money every year? I was just wondering why that is.
We lease the high school units or component, the MacBook We lease the high school units or component, the MacBooks, whereas the middle school, we purchased all in one shot. We were able to do that. It's a lesser, less expensive unit. We have a HP laptop in the middle school, so we were able to purchase all those, and that shows up then, three or four years, hands down here, another purchase of $600,000 for those laptops. Whereas the high school is a MacBook, far more expensive unit, so we'd lease that over four years for 425,000 a year.
Paul, I have two questions. So one of it goes back to the MacBook, just, I know the answer when I'm asked the question so you can publicly answer. When the lease is up, we, for all practical purposes, own them?
We do.
And the plan is to sell them all?
To third-party vendors.
To a third-party vendor. We're not selling them back to kids. We're not, we're just going to one-time roll back, and then we'll collect that money. Does that money go back into the Capital Outlay Fund? Where does that go, Paul?
Correct. It's reflected in 3.4 million dollars of fund balances at the end of the year, where I have my guys' plan, our plan, and our instructions are to get those units back in, gone through, ready for sale by June 1. So we're hoping to sell those in the month, this June of 2020, so they will be out the door gonzo by the end of the fiscal year. That amount of money is then reflected in the fund balances, adding to the fund balance here.
And part of the advantage to that is, is other school districts go longer into the year, and so we're out in the market sooner than other people are, to a certain extent.
One would hope, yeah. And there, there's definitely advantages of having these sold to one vendor. They come in, they get 1,000 units, relatively all the same. Some banged up more than others, obviously, but they get 1,000 units that they can distribute to another school district or something there. So there's some advantages. I don't know, we're not quite for sure what the exact amount of that's going to be, but we have some idea, and to be honest with you, I, I think the number I used was maybe 350 or 400,000 that I added to the, to the fund balance. Don't quote me on that, but that's the range of what we'll receive for those at the end of the, of the lifecycle of those.
The next question is, and again, I kind of know the answer, but I, it might be helpful because people are going to look and say, all of a sudden, our textbook purchases are making a leap, and they're staying way up there for X number of years in a row. I assume that's because we have some of these cycle runs, but now all of a sudden, we're hitting English, math, science, in back-to-back years, so we're hitting the big ones. And so in some years, we have a much lower amount because, you know, it's the encore books, or whatever it might be. And also, I think some might think that because we're digital at grades seven through 12, that there's a savings textbook-wise, but in reality, you're, you're purchasing an online textbook, which tends to be the same price as a hardcover book anyway, right?
Most certainly. No difference in price between a digital and a hard copy textbook. They just, they just give you the hard copy book if you buy digitally and say, use it as a paperweight. Yeah. So that is correct, that some years that are down years on a textbook adoption, and then they bounce up when you have math, your core, like you just said, core subject, math, English, those types of subjects. Last thing I would point out, if you can scroll down just a little bit, Jared, on this document, I've assumed a property valuation of 6% annually, which I think is fairly conservative in our, in our somewhat recent past. We've seen numbers in the last few years of 9%, 10%, 11% growth, but prior to that, in the slowdown of 2008, you know, it cuts back, so I used a 6% growth. And what that generates, that 6% annual growth in cash to the Brandon Valley School District would be about $325,000 a year. So that's why we're able to do what we do. We're growing our available cash, and that fund is growing by over $300,000 a year. If there are any more questions, I'll flip to the general fund next. General fund is our largest fund of all of them. It's our general operating fund of the district. You know, basically, this is where it all happens. Just so I can kind of briefly take you through the spreadsheet, how it works here. This is current year, 2019, 20, 29,314,000 dollars of revenues, 29,587,000 dollars expenses. So each year that, those numbers pop up to the beginning of the new year, and then we show just the additions or the subtractions of revenue, additions and subtractions of expenses. So each year, the ending amount of expenses pop up to the beginning of the next year, and then we just show the, the differences, the additions and the subtractions each year, just kind of give you a guideline on how the fund, how the spreadsheet works. On the bottom of that spreadsheet, if...
Down?
Yeah. Our screen isn't quite big enough to have it all on there. It's key here, the enrollment increases. Folks, that's everything to a school district now, enrollment. That drives everything that you do, financial-wise. And so that is such a critical number to, to our district. Everything's driven by that enrollment, and then the per-student allocation, which is the bottom line here. 5,775 dollars currently. This is what we're projecting for next year, the following year, blah, 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 all the way down the line. Those are hard to tell because although we're told that we will know that it'll be the lesser of inflation, or 3%, whichever is less, it doesn't always pan out that, that way. So it's kind of a fluid number there, so we try to project as, as best as we can. But on the, on the enrollments, as you can see, next year, we're projecting an enrollment growth of 160 new kids. And then it starts to tail off after that, down to, let's say, 100 kids a year. That's critical. To us as a district, we got to just really pay attention to that because for the last, you know, half a dozen years, we've been on a, a pretty good roll because our high school graduating classes are, you know, 220, 240, whatever they are, and we bring in a kindergarten class of 350. So I don't even have to show up, and I got 100 kids coming in. Automatically, boom. We just, our mere existence creates 100 new kids. That's gone after this year, basically. I mean, it's not gone, gone. It's, your high school is just, your senior class is going to equal, or get very close to your kindergarten class. So that built-in growth leaves us. So when you drop from a couple hundred, or 160 or 170 down to 100, it's a big number. And where you can see that, if you can bounce back up, I apologize, it doesn't fit on there. Or maybe I shouldn't apologize, maybe I should just get a bigger screen. Where you can see that is right here, the revenue from the enrollment increases next year with 160 kids, that's 930,000. 110 the following year is 650,000, 600,000, 555, 570. And that's including, you know, each year, the revenue from those kids goes up by the state aid increase percentage, but it's still, the total number is going down because of the growth of your students is going down. Now, I may be pleasantly surprised that maybe we will have more growth than what I'm projecting. I doubt it. I think you have to be fully aware and fully prepared that these numbers that I'm projecting are pretty accurate. They have, history has shown that they're very accurate. So our years of growing a couple hundred kids a year, they're gone. It's not going to happen anymore. You're looking at more so 100, 100-plus kids a year. Now, with that being said, there's not a school district in the state of South Dakota that wouldn't like to have 100 kids a year positive growth. It's just going to be a little different for the, you people sitting up on this side of the table, that when you drop from 900 or a million, that we've been accustomed to, drops down to 650, 600, 550. You see, with that, pretty soon, that's some real money. So it, everything is predicated upon that enrollment. I want to be very clear and make sure everybody understands that correctly.
Okay. Being, we're close to Sioux Falls, and Harrisburg is close to Falls. Harrisburg is growing by, I don't know, I'm just pulling a number out, 300 kids a year or something, or what is it? I'm, I'm just guessing.
Three, 400.
Okay. And we're so close to Sioux Falls, you don't see that happening on this east side as much?
No. The answer to that question, Greg, if you could drop down again, Jared, I'm sorry, on the enrollment. The answer to that with your example with Harrisburg, they're going to encounter the same thing, except theirs is exasperated much more than ours. Their, their high school has very low numbers comparative to ours, you know?
They aren't 300 now.
Right. They're, you know...
Graduate 200, bring in 400.
Okay.
Automatic 200 kids. The other thing that I would note in, when you talk about Sioux Falls, the proximity of Harrisburg to Sioux Falls, and the southern part of Sioux Falls, and the growth to Sioux Falls in the last decade has been substantial, and we're just, our distance is the more. Sorry, I did not mean to...
No, that's fine. That's, that's the answer.
But we've got 100 coming through too.
Yeah. So like I said, I may be pleasantly surprised on my enrollment numbers. I doubt it.
Okay.
I've been doing this for 30 years, and I've been on those enrollment numbers pretty good. Now, Highway 100 is going to have an impact. There's no question, but that, I'm building that impact in to some degree with these numbers. You know, growing 100 kids is, is nothing to be ashamed of, folks. It, that's, that's over 3%. Right at 3%.
And the other piece of that puzzle is, it's a more manageable growth. If all of a sudden, you're growing 300, 400 kids, now all of a sudden, you're, you're building every other year, it seems like, in, in hiring staff and getting those staff to be ingrained in who you are and what you do. Not growing is a big problem. Growing too fast also has its challenges too.
In great spot.
And how you manage that growth is the other part of that, Mr. Telkot. Because I will submit to you that we've, we've had, experienced some major, major growth. It's how we manage it that differentiates us from other school districts. We were prepared for that growth and saw it coming, so that's, that's key to that. Any other questions on the growth? Just remember that that's, is, everything is predicated on that. The next bullet point that I had is that the salary increases, the way I have plugged in here, they just merely mirror the state aid increase. And what I do is just take the inflation rate that it's currently projected for the next few years of 2%, and then give a 2% raise. So that's just for illustrative purposes. It doesn't mean that that's what our negotiations are going to end up. It's, it's what we plug in there because it mirrors the state aid percentage. This year, we have plugged in a state increase of, or I have plugged in of 1%, a salary increase of 1.5%. It's just trying to project as best as I can what we do here. Because you'll see up here that we have savings from retired staff. We need to reinvest that into our teachers. Not only is it the right thing to do, it's also required by us, by law, to reinvest, reinvest those funds back in your teacher's salary. And they keep track of that now, so that's why the 1% versus the 1.5%. As you can tell on here, the key things of increases are salary increases, benefit increases, and new staff. Those are the three major things that, that make this spreadsheet flow. The one that keeps me up at night is this one right here, benefit increases. We have that pegged in for 8% increase in health insurance next year. I don't think it's going to be enough, folks. Everybody look at me. That's going to be, it's not going to be enough. I just, my numbers are not running real good. Our utilization is very, very high. We have, we have done a tremendous job of managing our health insurance. Tremendous. We have a policy that's second to none, and we have a court, we give it, pass that on to our employees, and it's, it's a good thing. I'm afraid to report that that's about to end. It's just, our utilization, it's money coming in, it's not as much as money going out. Health insurance is not rocket science. If you pay in more than you take out, you get good increases. If you don't, you get bad increases. I'm just really worried. Like I said, I don't know. I will know in the first week of March, so everything will be predicated on that. What I have built in here, though, I want to point this out, that I'm nervous enough about it, that I have built in the elimination of our deductible buydown. Back in 2009, we started a program that we increased our deductible from $500 deductible to $1,000 deductible, and we received a $250,000 savings in our premium, annual savings in our premium. And then we bought that deductible back down to 500, and where the savings came, it only cost us, back then, back then, it was probably about 100,000. Today, it's 150,000, between 100 and 150,000 to buy that deductible back down to a $500 deductible. So it's been a tremendous program for us. We have saved in excess of $1 million throughout the years, from 2009 to 2020. Excess of over $1 million that has saved us with that program. Very proud of that program. But it's just getting to the point where I believe that we're going to have some increases on our health insurance premiums that are not going to allow us to continue that program. It's not that the program is going south on us. The program's still good. We received those savings on the premium that we received back in 2009. They just continue, you know? When they cut your premium back then, that just is built in, and it just keeps going. And we're not paying out as much on the deductible buydown, but I need that deductible buydown money to help us pay for the increase in the premium. So bottom line, what that'll do is, it'll just increase our deductible to $1,000 rather than the 500. So that's what I have built in there. By chance, if that doesn't come to fruition, we'll just eliminate that, and we'll go back to where we were. And, you know, if it's more, there's a potential, it could be more than that, so we'll have to look at other avenues to reduce expenses too. I don't know how other, when I deliver presentations, I feel like the Grinch that sold Christmas, but there's no other way I can put it. I mean, I got to be factual on, on these things, and that's an area of concern.
Is there a chance that, that whole, that whole healthcare insurance type of goal could change after the election? Would be like drastically different?
Don't speculate.
There's a chance that it could change. There's not a chance that it can change where it's going to have reduced cost to us. No, that, that, that will not happen. And we will be looking at every, trust me, every alternative that's available to us to try to, but there's just a ton of things that go into health insurance, guys. There's just, you know, we have a grandfathered plan that is, is key to, to our success, that if we make changes that are too major, then we lose that status, and then our health insurance goes up just because we have to pay for additional things that are not required of a grandfathered plan. So there's just a lot of things that administratively, I'm dealing with that program, will continue to deal with, but just want you aware that it's, it's a line item that's very large and very concerning.
Paul, I got a question. So that line item of 140,000 then carries up to 21, 22, I mean, it's in the 21, 22 of 30 million, right?
Right, right. That savings is carried up to...
300,000, or, yeah, 30 million. Okay. But you don't anticipate any additional spending in that next, I mean, meaning you got zero there?
Right. That's, the whole program, I mean, I got the elimination of the whole program that next year.
That 140, and it'll be an automatic 140 you'll be injecting? Nope?
No. That, we will not spend that money, so it'll be a reduction in our expenses. So then it goes into the, it gets added, or subtracted from the 30 million that we have here, and then that carries forward to the next year. So that, that 140,000 of reduced expenditures carries forward to the next years. It's in there. It's just, there will be nothing more after that. Next thing I had on the general fund, you'll notice here on the cost of, operational costs of additional buildings, 150,000 I have budgeted in 2020, 21, and then another 150,000 in 21, 22. It's going to cost in the area of $4, $4.50 a square foot to operate a new building, which is coming on the following year. The reason I do this, $150,000 this year and $150,000 next year, is that basically, in 2021, this is just a placeholder. We're not going to spend anything. We don't have a building to spend it on in 2021. It's a placeholder, though, to not spend that dollar amount, so that carries forward then. so that carries forward then into 21, 22, that we have that. And so 21, 22, I don't have to have 300,000 in here because if we spend it here, it's 150,000 I'm short next year. Guys all follow me? It's kind of a placeholder, is all it is. There's not gonna be an actual cash distribution of that 150,000 because we don't have a building to pay for. It's planning. It's a planning tool for us, so we don't get hit with that all in one year. It's been very successful for us in the operation component of new buildings. And paying for the heat, lights, utilities, custodians, blah, blah, blah.
So the, the relatively large addition for the high school is gonna be paid out all from cash. And so this is tied into a bond issue school, but the high school addition, there'll be some expenses. We got more classrooms now, but that's just all gonna come straight out of cash, and that's why there's not an item like that for that, so to speak. Is that the reason for that?
That and a new building, obviously a new building is different, that I, I can push things harder in an addition. I can just say, Ty, you're gonna deal with, you're gonna operate with the same number of custodians that you had last year. We're just gonna have to make it work, you know. We're gonna put 20,000 square feet on, but we have to make it work. And so that, that gets pushed down the road a little bit further on an addition.
I get it.
Whereas I can't push anything on a new building.
Yeah, I was just, because I was thinking there could be confusion. People say, well, why isn't there such an item? But I, I understand, yeah.
The other item to note is these are, this $150,000 is a general fund expenditure for operating costs of the building, whereas the new, the, the construction of the high school addition, the savings that he has there is for the actual construction of the facility. Your operational costs will increase a little bit, but not nearly to the tune of.
Totally get it.
That.
Totally get it.
But it is a very good question, the fact that I'm, I'm gonna be putting on 20,000 or whatever thousand square foot that, that fourth year. And some of that is included up, that, that number right above when I have other supplies, materials, utilities. I'll be able to withstand some of that in that line item too. It's just key. It's been so successful for us to have that, to plan in that a year ahead on the, on the operational costs of a new building. That's been, so when you see this 150,000, that's a placeholder. So when you guys approve the budget in July, it's my intent that that budget is gonna show basically balanced. You know, cause I'm showing a $148,000 deficit, and this, I don't wanna say it's not a real number, it's a placeholder number, is what it is. Everybody follow me on that?
Yeah.
Good, good, good. Other questions on the general fund? As I said, I don't wanna be doom and gloom, the bearer of bad news, but this is the line that, that is the straw that stirs the drink, right there going across. And that's going from a couple hundred or 175. This year, we grew 177 kids. I think budget was 175, so it was spot on. Next year, we're projected 160. The following year, 110, 190, 90. So you might say 100 kids a year.
What's the, what's the fund balance number that, what's kind of your drop dead? I wouldn't wanna go below this percent. Is that at 14?
Uh, here's our, that's my last bullet point of our, here's our fund balance projections of throughout the years. 5.5 million at the end of this year, which is 19, 19% of our expenditures. 5.5, 18, 5.2, 16, 15. We need to, and, and there's a reason why this deficit spending is going away. We need to do that. That structural deficit needs to go away. As I've been telling you ad nauseam, that our expenditures run, are running right now at 100%. And we have that screwed down pretty tight, our expenditures. And there's no fluff in there. There's no room. It's, it's the way you should do it. You're dealing with taxpayers' money. People don't pay taxes for me to put it in First National Bank. They pay taxes for you to start programs and pay your teachers. So that's why this deficit is being eliminated throughout the five years, cause we need to do that. The fund balance goes down to 5 million at the end of the five-year point, and our, our goals or our strategic plan shows a fund balance of 15% is the lowest we wanna go. And that drops to 14% in that fifth year. So it's, it's right at the level that we wanna stop that bleed at the end of the five years. And we have always managed that well, that fund balance number, and I anticipate us to continue that. But, yeah, that is dropping throughout the five-year plan here, slowly, slower than it has in the past. And, and this deficit of 273,000 that we have budgeted for 20, 1920, that'll be actual. Unless some revenue line item comes in way more than I thought, which, you know, with other revenues, we have a chance of that happening. Bank franchise tax is a big number that sometimes can fluctuate from year to year, but unlikely, but possible. Any other questions on general fund? If not, I'll switch over to special education fund. I won't talk as long on special education fund. Spreadsheet works the same. Total revenue bounces up to the beginning revenue for the next year. Total expenses bounce up to the beginning expenses for the following year. Same sort of things in the guts of the program, salaries, additional staff, benefits, just on a lesser scale. Total budget for the special education fund is 6,368,000 this year. Bounces up to 6.8, 7 million, 7.8, 8 million throughout the five-year term there. Scroll down just a little bit. Here's our biggest concern in special education funding. We're making some progress here, and that is the fund balance. That fund balance was basically depleted a year or two ago. And we have made strides to get that in a positive number here, and it, we have done some positive things with that. It's up to $725,000 at the end of this year, 925, projected at the end of next year. It's such a hard thing to control expenses in a special education fund. You know, I can, we're day in and day out, night and day in it. I can't control all those expenditures that happen in there. There's, there's only a finite number of expenses that I can control in that fund. We're dictated and mandated by law to do certain things in there. But that's the, the biggest thing of the special education fund is that fund balance number. As you can see, it starts dropping back down over the five-year period. It's just, it's, it's difficult. We have enrollment growth here. This is our child count. I have that plugged in at going up about 50 kids a year. Our child count has grown substantially in the last four or five years. Definitely. And 50 might be a low number. As you can see, this year went up, or will go up next year, 59 kids. Past year it went up 46 kids. That's pretty substantial growth in the spec ed fund. Child count is about 625 kids, 630 kids in that area, so kinda puts it in perspective, percentage wise, how many, how much that is. I mean, 60 divided by 600, 10% a year. Anyhow, same numbers down here as the general fund raises and, and benefit increases. Any questions on the spec ed fund? If not, I'll end up with the enrollment projection chart. It's second to last page of the summary section there. Let Jared catch up to me here. The other stuff in there is factual information for you just to review on enrollments and, and where they've been and where they're continuing to go. Various staffing increases that we've had over the years. It's nice to keep that running total in chart to see where we increased, decreased, whatever.
Sorry?
No, you're fine. Gives me a chance to breathe.
Keep going.
As he's scrolling through the, those are numbers, the class size, that's important information for you to also reveal the class sizes that they're currently at in the elementaries, middle school, intermediate school, and high school.
Is this on?
Yep, that's what I'm looking for. It gets pretty funky there at the, is that cause I don't have a large enough screen? As we talked about, this is our enrollment projection. This is the current year, 4,424. This is, enrollments does not include out-of-district placements. So there's probably 35 to 40 kids that we have in out-of-district placements throughout the period that adds to this enrollment minus early childhood, and we'll get into that. My key on this that I wanted to point out, in the 12th grade this year, 1920, there's 251 kids. And we're bringing in 345 in ninth graders. There's that built-in 100 kid increase that I was talking about. And that starts to go away as we drop down in the enrollment chart. They, they just come closer together, that senior class versus that freshman class come closer together, so we lose that built-in growth there. The enrollment projections are really contingent upon that kindergarten class. We have that pegged in for 350 kids a year throughout the term of the five years. That's about the, the average class that we, that we have been seeing the last three, four years. And hopefully that's, comes to fruition and that continues in that mode. I don't see any reason why it shouldn't, but you just never know. There might be some aberration that comes in where that hits at 310 or 320, and then at that point, we gotta make changes on the fly. We've kinda gone over this whole thing. And 160 next year, 110 that following year, and then 90, 90, 90. So you can see all those that go from there. The last thing I had, that, that utilization that Jared asked if that's where I wanted to stop, that chart prior to that. We're in good shape on our building utilization, our capacities. The one thing that you will notice that in 21, 22, what I did is I pulled the junior K program out of Robert Bennett Elementary just to free up some room at Robert Bennett, cause that's getting closer to capacity, you know, buy us some time in that, that facility. Because we'll have the capacities with our new elementary school coming online in the south end of the district. It's just that we gotta, we gotta free up a little bit room and, a little bit of room in Robert Bennett Elementary before we hit that stage of another elementary. Fred Assam will drop considerably when we build that new school, so their capacities will be very ample. And you can see the capacities of the, of the other schools. We're in good shape. Very good shape in our capacities, especially with that new school coming on in the fall of '21. Questions on that? That's it. Trying to plan for that growth is, is just key. That's basically what I have. And the subsections of the rest of the chart are prepared by the various administrators of the, of the district and principals of the various schools, along with Mr. Henshaw on the operation side of things. That's the detail of all the, of all the plan. I did have a question from a citizen, you know, does this stuff all take place? You know, you look at a five-year plan, you see all this pages. Most generally, you look back, it does take place. That's why it's so critical to plan for that. This is where we're looking as a central office. It's so critical to plan for this stuff and, and have it in this plan, because most of it does take place. If it's in there and it's valid, it's gonna, it's gonna occur. There you have it.
Thank you very, very much, Mr. Longbird. All right, that takes us to our first item under personnel, approve the request for new staffing for the 2021 school year.
All right, thank you, Adam Chair. We have tonight for you a recommendation on new staffing for the 2021 school year. Would let you know that the general way our process works is principals submit a five-year plan to the central office. At that point in time, we have the ability to review those plans. I then meet with our administration during an administrative council meeting, talk about staffing requests. Sometimes we brainstorm ways in which we're able to meet the needs of our buildings by utilizing people we already have, et cetera. Ultimately, what I have for you this evening is a general fund staffing request of a little over $400,000. I'll walk you through what that is, and then also a special education, special education fund staffing request. Elementary teacher, K4, one FTE, ultimately taking on that same pool approach that we have utilized over the last four years, so that we're able to assign that teacher as enrollment deems necessary. One intermediate school computer teacher, that solves some, some complexities and some issues with us at Robert Bennett Elementary, as well as in the area of gifted education. So that solves a few different items for us with a one FTE at the intermediate school. The high school, as you guys have seen outlined in the five-year plan, and you've seen over the course of the last few years, as we've talked about, our high school's growth, they'll see approximately 100 new students with their, with their incoming freshman class to their graduating seniors. So we have a high school math, a high school English, and a high school science for, for three FTE and core area teachers. And then in addition to that, we'll be increasing our art teacher from part-time to full-time to accommodate the necessary sections in art. You'll see teach well placements in both the general fund and also in the special education fund request totaling about $60,000. That's because of our number of students that attend the High Impact or the Teach Well Academy over in, over in Sioux Falls. And the increase that we've seen there with our increase in our, in our high school enrollment. And then the paid student apprenticeships, and what this is, ultimately, just like we had approved at Brandon Elementary, we have one paid student apprentice over there working in a lower, lower elementary grade. What we have slotted here are two of those individuals, paid apprenticeships that are our seniors. Next year, we'll be able to apply for. And Mr. Schlecker will vet those candidates with elementary administration and select two individuals to receive that paid apprenticeship. Basically, they work half-time, receiving its work-based learning. They receive CTE credit in addition to garnering the $11 an hour wage outlined in our classified agreement. And then in addition to that, we have two paid apprenticeships for custodial services. Again, work-based learning. They will garner the wage in addition to 4 to 8 p.m., and we'll have our elementary and intermediate school buildings eligible for them to work in. I would note that that really helps alleviate pressure off of our custodial substitute issue. Two things. One thing is it's extremely hard to find custodial subs to come in and do the work. And then the second thing is we're able to alleviate a little bit of budget pressure off of that line item by employing those, those students for work-based learning. So with that, we have a general fund staffing request in the amount of $415,000. It's similarly relevant to note that there's always more, there's always more needs than, than resources. It's the, the nature of the game in public education. It does not diminish any of the other needs, it's just a matter of prioritizing those needs, and that's what we've done here for you in this recommendation. Special education funding, two special education teachers, that increases $130,000. At this point in time, that we'll have one FTE here at Brown Valley High School, and we estimate one FTE at Robert Bennett Elementary. In addition to Robert Bennett Elementary, that individual will help support special education evaluation within the district. We have two special education EAs in the amount of 30,000 apiece or 60,000 total. And then the other item I wanted to draw your attention back to, we did hire an additional EA, an unplanned for position here in January due to, due to an individual child enrollment that required and necessitated that increase in staffing. So for next year, you'll have three more EAs than you technically had to start this year, but we're recommending two special education. We're recommending two special education EAs, uh, over and above which you currently have. One sign language interpreter, again, that's, uh, that's necessary due to the enrollment of an individual child that requires those services. And then you can see the increase in, uh, TeachWell placements there. Uh, that is a total of 275,000 dollars. So, Madam Chair, with that, I certainly entertain any questions that you have, um, but recommend approval.
I have a question, it's a small line item on this, but the TeachWell placement, um, and maybe Mark can answer the question for me. Um, I'm wondering if, if TeachWell continues to meet, um, the needs that we have. We're expanding the amount of money we wanna spend at TeachWell. Um, and I know that historically, we have sent two kinds of kids to TeachWell. Going way back, there were two different programs at TeachWell, and I don't think that they differentiate anymore. But one of those placements was for kids who struggled with behavior issues and those kinds of things. But there's always a number of students who are there in their third and fourth year that are credit poor. But my understanding is, is that they have changed the programming. So instead of a student being able to earn eight credits in a year, so the credit poor kid catching up, because at the high school, unless you're gonna give up your lunch or study hall, most are gonna earn a seven, and so we've seen kids over there. My understanding is, is that TeachWell is no longer offering that option. Is that correct? Are they continuing to offer eight credits a year, or they no, no longer doing that?
Yeah, no, they, they're building their schedule around three and a half credits a semester, but there is still the opportunity to earn four credits a semester.
So they would potentially still be able to get eight credits a year and still be, serve the purpose we would need for kids who are credit poor so they can graduate on time?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
I think the, uh, it certainly is relevant to note that TeachWell Academy, and, uh, you can note this in your, um, in your board reports, they're looking at expansion with the, with the growing enrollment in and around the Sioux Falls metro area and the cooperative members that have growing needs and some of the, um, tweaks and changes that have occurred in juvenile justice and some of those types of things. School districts are looking at, uh, programmatic changes to make certain that we meet the needs of all kids. I would say that at this point in time, TeachWell has been an extremely solid partner on, on the front for both ends of those kids. And even as we look and grow, not just in our five-year plan, but as we look BV Vision 2040 and we start talking about having a CTE academy or a STEM academy at Valley Springs Elementary, uh, there's still gonna be a place for TeachWell in the High Impact program as our, as our enrollment grows. The types of kids that we, um, that we have to serve and are required to serve, uh, there'll be certainly a place for them, um, in a variety of different ways. So, yeah, great, great question. Any other questions, staffing requests? Thank you, Madam Chair, recommend approval.
Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the request for the new staffing for the 2021 school year.
Same move. Second.
There's been a first and a second, roll call vote, Mr. Lombard.
Telkot.
Yes.
Lombard.
Yes.
Odie.
Yes.
Saxer.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes, thank you. Two items there under number 10 and 11 that are information only. Um, under communication, there are some thank yous from, uh, to the Board of Education from some various, uh, people and families for you to look.
Hey, don't forget to take action on our consent.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
Oh, I totally crossed that out and missed it. All right, I would entertain a motion under personnel to approve items two through nine.
Same move.
Second.
There's been a first and a second, roll call vote, Mr. Lombard.
Clumper.
Yes.
Odie.
Yes.
Telkot.
Yes.
Saxer.
Yes.
Hold on.
Yes. Okay, I apologize, I think I just threw myself completely off.
By, by your information.
Now where am I? I'm kidding, okay. Now we're at board reports. Um, formal reports, does anyone have one tonight that they would like to share? Going back to what Superintendent Larson said, under alternative education, which encompasses EDEC, which is the legal name for the TeachWell, um, is what it goes by. Um, there's distinct entities in that, in that, um, system where they not only have the academy piece, but they also have the transitions program. And so they're two different things for two different sets of, um, students. What we have been charged with, basically like Superintendent Larson said, from outline areas and non-member districts. Remember, TeachWell is made up of three member districts, it's West Central, which is Hartford, ourselves, and then Lenox. Um, we have been requested to increase our membership base, the answer, short answer to that was no. The three entities who are the founding members of that have decided that we don't, we would like everybody to be able to participate in the services. The thing is, we would like to maintain, um, oversight of that, um, of that entity. So what we are looking at, and hopefully I can bring you some news, you know, later on in March, is we are looking at expanding. We have put in a, uh, purchase, um, or negotiate, whatever you call that in the Realtor terms, for the Boys and Girls Club that is actually Kitty Corner from Beetle School, which is where, sorry, that's an old Sioux Falls term for all you people who don't know Beetle School. Anyway, where TeachWell is now, it's right Kitty Corner from there. We have been asked to look at expanded service, expanded services for autism, so that some, um, entities can pull out of the private sector because they're very expensive. I'm not saying there's not a place for them because there is, but it's just a matter of, we've been looking at more economical options and, you know, ABA training and things like that. We've also been charged with looking at what are we doing for our intermediate school age kids and more middle school age kids. So this is kind of where this is coming. Um, Brian Ost is, um, now employed, um, back with us at TeachWell, and he has, um, some very good ideas and some, uh, big plans for the future, and we're, we're very excited. So hopefully I can tell you more in April that things are, um, things are headed forward and we can go from there. So, thank you for that question. Anyone else have anything they'd like to share tonight? Well, I guess I should note, under child nutrition and wellness, uh, Mrs. Anderson, the, um, nutrition service director, and I will be headed out to the Rural No Kids Hungry Summit in Columbus, Ohio in March to do a presentation for them at their request. So I'm, you know, looking forward to going to Columbus, Ohio, I'm not sure what's there or anything to do fun, but I, I travel for food, so, you know. I'll just, full disclosure. Because I'm like Columbus, Missouri, no. Um, so we, uh, it, that will be fun to do. And it's, it's, it's always nice to share what our, um, board and district has been able to do with child nutrition and some of the innovative things and, you know, letting gay have that or, you know, encouraging gay to take that position as SNA, um, president for the last two years has been a wonderful thing. So, um, if anybody has any questions, you can certainly let us know. And personal welfare, you've already reported on what we're doing there, so. Anyone else? If not, there are some travel reports there for your review. And if no one has anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Same move. Second.
There's been a first and a second, roll call vote, Mr. Lombard.
Telkot.
Hi.
Clumper.
Yes.
Odie.
Yep.
Saxer.
Yes.
Hold on.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you everyone for coming tonight.